Some people are still filtering it, but we are going to get started with the special town meeting Tuesday, November 12th. So I open the meeting, I call it support order. My name is Jay Callerman, and I am your moderator. I will be running the meeting. I hereby declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published, and I hereby declare that the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. If we could stand and get our pledge of allegiance. Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First, a little bit introduction to my immediate left. We have Carol Green, our town clerk, Rebecca Tepp, our assistant town clerk. We have the select board, starting with the chair, Jim Lee Tan, Adita Mecklenburg, and Kevin Roach. We've got our town administrator, Justin Casanova-Davis, town council, Tom Harrington, and our finance director, Todd Lindmark. And the table on the floor in front of this stage is our advisory board. They will be making the majority of the motions, and that that board is chaired by David Luce, and I'll be introducing various members who will be making the motions. If we need to count the vote today, we have three tellers that will assist me. Those are Paul Terrio, Walter Byron, and Andy Backenowski, as needed. Our town meeting is governed by Town Meeting Time, which is a treatise on parliamentary procedure in Massachusetts, as well as our local bylaws. As needed, I will explain procedures and will recognize legitimate requests for points of order. Truly, if you don't understand some element of parliamentary procedure, please raise your hand and raise a point of order. I don't want this to be so complex at any point, and I hope it's not, that people don't understand what we are voting on. Motions generally, in fact, all motions tonight, initial motion, will be made by the advisory board. If there are motions to amend, they can be made by other people. We do permit motions to indefinitely postpone. A motion to indefinitely postpone is essentially a motion to kill consideration of an article. We do that sparingly, but sometimes those motions are allowed. If there are a number of motions pending on a specific article, but there is a motion to indefinitely postpone, it isn't debatable. We will vote on it, and we will see if it takes the whole bundle of motions with it. Those who make the motions will generally have the first opportunity to explain. Tonight, we have a few larger ticket items, and immediately after that explanation by the advisory board, generally, we will have people making presentations. Those will be coming up. Any deba— any subsid— any subsidiary motions must be within the scope of the article, and the debate must be within the scope of the article as well. That is, it must have, whatever you are saying, whatever you are making a motion on, must have a reasonable relationship to the matter being discussed. And I make those decisions as to whether or not it's within the scope. If your motion or your debate does not—is not within the scope of the article, then I may ask you to stop, or I may redirect you to something that is more relevant to the matter. Motions and motions to amend must be in writing, provided that for ministerial clerical corrections, I will accept friendly amendments, and I will help with the procedure on that. You may speak only when recognized by the moderator. If you want to speak, come to a microphone. If you are unable to do so, raise your hand, and we will get a mic to you. I will try and balance discussion as best I can. Everyone has a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I want to avoid repetition and get to the matter at hand. Under our bylaws, you have a maximum of five minutes the first time to a mic, three minutes for the second time on the mic, but don't be surprised if I move you along if we're getting repetitive. Also, I may allow someone with new info or important information to speak a third time, but by bylaw, I may limit you to two times. I hope we have spirited debate, and that this meeting both with debate that both supports and challenges the issues that are present. However, no personal comments, and all comments must be civil and respectful. If comments stray beyond the limits I have noted, or if there is a disruption, I will ask you to stop. If you do not stop, you will be asked to leave. We have many local officials and staff members here, and between myself and them, we will try and get any legitimate questions answered. For those in the visitor's section, you have no right to speak unless I recognize you to speak. If you do speak or are disruptive, you will be asked to stop and then leave if necessary. If anyone wants to film the meeting, they must let me know, and I will approve the means and location of the filming. I will ask for a voice vote on motions, and we can usually tell what the vote is. No shouting, please. It's not necessary. If I cannot discern the result, I may ask for a show of hands or take a standing count. If I can't, still can't figure it out, then I will have the vote counted by the tellers. That especially comes up during the zoning articles, of which there are several. I will declare a two-thirds vote if it is clear in the body. I do respect a call of the question, which is a call to cut off debate, provided that if anyone is lined up at a microphone at the time, I may allow them to speak, and I may also choose to reject any such motion if I think it is premature and there's still important debate to happen. Similarly, if I'm hearing a lot of the same comment, I may abbreviate the debate on my own. There are a number of handouts and some boards out in the hallway. I hope they're helpful. Detailed handouts are helpful. We will also have a number of things on the screen. With that, we are ready to get going. And Article One involving unpaid bills, we'll hear a motion from Mr. Luce.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article One.
Do I have a second? I've moved in second, Mr. Luce.
The town does not currently have any unpaid bills from any previous fiscal years, so the advisory committee is recommending that we postpone this.
Okay, it's a motion to indefinite postpone, which is to essentially dismiss the article as it is unnecessary. Seeing no one lined up at the mics and hearing no questions or debates, we will take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article Two, budget transfer. Mr. Luce.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $493,889, of which $475,374.75 is transferred from free cash, and $18,514.25 is transferred from the opioid abatement stabilization fund. $200,000 of which will be transferred to the town's stabilization fund, $25,000 of which will be transferred to the OPEB trust fund, and the remainder to be added to departmental budgets and appropriations for the current fiscal year, as shown on the screen.
Mr. Luce, you have a second. Second. Mr. Luce, explanation.
Article Two would authorize the town to transfer $492,889 from free cash in the opioid stabilization fund to fund a number of items, including $200,000, which goes to the town's own stabilization fund, and several other items. The full list is up on the screen. You also—it's on the handout that was outside. The committee reviewed these transfers and voted to support the transfers from the truth to sources named above.
Thank you, Mr. Luce. These are budgetary transfers. Any questions or concerns? Seeing no one rising to a mic, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article Three, capital expenditures involving borrowing. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, I move the town appropriate the sum of $750,000 to fund the acquisition of a ladder truck for the Norfolk Fire Department, including all expenses incidental and related thereto. And further, to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow such sum pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or Section 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes thereof.
Second. Been moved in second, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Article Three is asking for $750,000 to purchase a ladder truck and related equipment for the fire department. This is a shared vehicle with the town of Rantham. They're having a similar vote for $750,000 in their community, and the remainder of the cost is being paid through a FEMA grant that was obtained by the two communities. The advisory committee voted unanimously to support the article.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Rosenberg.
David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. I don't understand—or I'd appreciate an explanation of how a shared fire truck works. Will it be in Norfolk? Will it be in Rantham? Will it be in Norfolk some of the time and Rantham some of the time? Who controls it? Please explain how sharing a fire truck works.
Excellent question, Chief.
So, the shared resource. So, the Rantham Fire Chief and myself both have aging ladder trucks or aerial devices that are in—need to be replaced. So, with the way the market is, and also, you know, looking at our response model and everything, and a lot of those factors, we made the decision and determined it would be advantageous for both communities to look at a shared resource for this vehicle. This vehicle obviously would go to all fire—structure fires in either community. The reason it works for us, just some foundational pieces. The vehicle—we are the hosting agency. We will house the vehicle. It will be staffed by our personnel in combination with Rantham personnel when called upon. So, Rantham is splitting the cost share of equipment, maintenance, and the vehicle itself with us, and the one change that is occurring that really the community probably wouldn't recognize an impact is, instead of our engine going to Rantham for structural responses, we will now send this shared vehicle because it is in part Rantham. So, it's a shared resource agreement. When our mutual aid plan, we will just respond with that vehicle to Rantham, to every structure, as opposed to our engine, which is what currently happens. So, it's just a shift in what vehicle we send, and it allows us to not have to bear the significant expense on our own. It's kind of a regional type of approach, and this is the type of vehicle that that type of approach works for.
Thank you, Chief. Quick follow-up, Mr. Rosenberg.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. I'm wondering if you and the Rantham chief have come to some agreement about how you would resolve conflicts? If one of you wants to do something with that ladder and the other one objects, you know, how will that be resolved?
Chief, I assume this is under either your mutual aid agreement or some other intermunicipal agreement?
That is correct. There will be an intermunicipal agreement. We have a preliminary draft of that, which actually lays out specifics. Since it is a FEMA grant that is paying for the majority of it, the federal government would be involved, and we actually, in the intermunicipal agreement, put that wording in there so that, you know, it was—it would be reflected upon positively. In essence, it's one of the factors that helped us actually get the grant, is the fact that they would have a say into mediating if there was some kind of issue or difference between us, so it would be an independent third party done by the government for FEMA.
Thank you, Chief. Seeing no further comments or questions, this requires—you have to go to a mic. Give us your name and your address.
Yeah, Jack Oliveri, Four Barrel Place. The article says that it will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow a sum of money. So, which is it?
The motion is for borrowing.
It's just for borrowing.
That's—the motion. The motion is for the borrowing. The motion that was read by Mr. Fitzgerald is for borrowing.
Okay, so is that a bond, or how do we—how do we borrow that money?
Bond.
Bond.
Borrowing.
Okay.
Pay debt service on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no further questions, it does involve borrow. Mr. Roosevelt. You can't wait too long. You gotta get—you gotta get up there.
Hey, I wanna give you time. What are the effects on the tax—what is gonna be the effects on the taxes? Oh, I'm sorry. Christopher Weider, 64 Cleveland Street. What would be the effect on the taxes for this purchase? And also, I guess maybe I'm mistaken, as—even though I know we have a mutual aid agreement. So, if Norfolk Fire Department is going to service a fire in Rantham, obviously, they bill per hour. How do Norfolk get reimbursed by Rantham? Is that part of the mutual aid agreement, or how does that work? In other words, we're not gonna—at the line, stop. Rantham firefighters get in the truck and go to their own fires.
The second question, I'll let the chief answer. The first question is, I believe, answered. This is within the levy limit, so there's no increase. This is not a debt exclusion. This is all handled under our annual levy limit, so normal—it's no change in taxation from what are the normal annual increases. Chief, on the breakdown of costs and expenses there?
So, for—in terms of our response to Rantham, again, the change—it—there is really no change. The same commitment of people is going to Rantham in case they have a fire, and it's a mutual aid agreement. So, it is—they come to us, and we go to them. And the way those work, there is no monetary exchange in mutual aid agreements. We don't—we don't get reimbursed, and we don't reimburse other departments when they come support us. So, for instance, every single fire we've had of any kind in Norfolk since I've been here, there's been at least two or three additional towns besides us there. We don't reimburse them for that. And in kind, when we go to support them, they don't reimburse us. So, the mutual aid agreements are based on need, NFPA requirements, and the safety, and also providing a higher level of service with a lower number of resources. In other words, it significantly reduces the cost of delivering service. For instance, if I had to staff our department 100% to handle just a basic 2,000-square-foot home, the cost is astronomical. It's like 16 people per shift. Well, I make up that difference by calling in mutual aid, and every other town that touches us and around us does the exact same thing. So, it reduces the overall cost impact to deliver services, but there is no monetary exchange when we do mutual aid.
Mr. Campbell, great to see you here.
Jack Campbell, 7 Chickadee Drive. I just wanted to find out what the actual total cost of the ladder truck is. How much is—the total cost, and how much is the grant that FEMA is giving us?
Great, thank you. Good question, Jack.
Okay. So, the total all-in cost—I actually got a number today—is $2.399 million and $20. That's—that's the all-in cost. The grant that we got from FEMA is for $1 million, or actually, it's $1.1 million. It requires a match from the awarded community, so we have to combine with Rantham, put up $100,000 for the match, and then the remaining funds to pay for the remainder of the vehicle. The cost is high. It is, and that is the reason we chose a regional concept, because, you know, the cost of these vehicles and apparatus is significant, and this is one that isn't necessarily at every single day use, but when you need it, you want it, and you need it there. So, it was just a way for us to, again, lower the cost and the impact to the community, but still provide the high level of service, which is important to us, so.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments or questions, this again requires a two-thirds vote to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
In my opinion, it passes by a two-thirds majority. Article Four, capital items that don't involve borrowing. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $1,89,500 to fund the capital expenditures displayed on the screen, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second. Been moved in second, Mr. Fitzgerald.
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. Article Four authorizes the town to purchase a number of capitalized—capital items using operating funds and free cash. The full list of items is available here on the screen and in the handout. The advisory committee reviewed the full list and met with the department heads and believes these purchases are necessary for the proper functioning of many departments in the town, and the advisory committee did vote unanimously in support of all the projects listed.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Any questions, comments on the list that you see up on the screen? Mr. Rosenberg.
I—I see one of the items is Norfolk Schools EBS consoles. What is an EBS console?
Do we have someone who can answer that? If you have our superintendent of school, welcome.
That is the emergency announcement system at the H. Olive Day. Whenever we have to make an announcement to notify staff if there was ever an evacuation, that's the system that we use to make an announcement. It's like—it's an intercom system. Sure.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further comments or questions on Article Four, it requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Article Five is a zoning amendment regarding the Southwood site. Mr. Luce, you have a motion for it.
Mr. Moderator, I move that—to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Been moved in second, Mr. Luce.
Article Five would create a new zoning rules for the C-6 commercial district, which is located on Route 1A or Dedham Street and is known as the old Southwood Hospital property. The town's new master plan has identified the redevelopment of this property as an important part of Norfolk's future growth. Potential allowable uses under these zoning changes would be for commercial warehouse and light industrial, as well as some retail and assisted-living parcels. As many citizens are aware, this property has been—has remained underutilized for decades due to onsite contamination related to its previous operation as a state hospital. The Norfolk Planning Board has been working with the current property owners to put in place zoning rules that would allow investment in the property, including in the cleanup of the contamination. It is important to note that these new rules do not have any direct impact on the property owner's legal requirements to address its contamination. Passage of the new zoning rules, however, would allow the property owners and the town to begin to make strategic decisions on the site based on the potential for future redevelopment.
Thank you, Mr. Luce. There were a number of handouts available here as well. I believe we are going to see a presentation by the planning board here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Chris Montfort. I'm the vice chair of the planning board. I'm here to introduce the C-6 zone. This is also known as the Southwood Hospital—Hospital location. It's bordered by Walpole on the east. It's currently a commercial residential zone on Route 1A of Dedham Street, and it's important to note that no other properties are being affected by any of these proposed zoning changes. Next slide. History of the site. This was officially the first cancer research hospital in the nation. It's known as the Southwood Hospital. It's currently abandoned. It's got a lot of contamination on it as well, and it's currently deed restricted for hospital use only. It's been purchased by GFI Partners. It was performed back in February of 2021. Next slide. Throughout this process, we've done a lot of zoning studies. We've looked at it from the perspective of what the potential future for Southwood could be. We wanted to make sure that we were documenting the community's preferences. We wanted to identify shared goals between the town, the community, as well as the developer, and we wanted to recommend zoning and other activities that would allow us to enable a net positive for the overall town and the community. Next slide. This has been a small part of a much larger process. We started roughly in about 2003. Over the last couple of years, though, we've had a lot of community involvement. Next slide. This is a list of all the meetings, either with the planning board, various stakeholders, or community meetings that we've engaged in. You can see that as early as April 12, 2022, all the way down through 2024 of June, we've been involved in a lot of different conversations around this topic related to this site. There's also been involvement with what is known as the PIP group, the Public Involvement Group. Next. Here, we're showing that we were looking at the focus for the town, the property owner, and the surrounding neighborhood to identify what we can do for the property that would meet everyone's interest as a whole. Next slide. We overlooked multiple hypothetical solutions for this location. We reviewed 15 scenarios in particular. Overall, we had to ensure that the feasibility and the potential impacts of this design served everyone's needs. Next slide. So, we're here asking today to vote in the affirmative for these zoning changes so that we can remove some of these residential uses to align further with these community goals. We want to make sure that we're creating an area to develop commercial and light industrial use. We're adding non-residential uses to the C-6 that are allowed currently in other commercial zones, the C-1 in particular. We're going to prohibit fulfillment center uses, which will align with the community's desires. This does not allow an Amazon to come in and perform those types of functions here. We're gonna create a uniform dimensional requirement for commercial and light industrial uses, and we'll also push forward on the Metacomic Greenway, something I think we are all really interested in. Next slide. So, what was our path to today? GFI has worked very closely with the town. There's been a lot of community outreach, as I mentioned, via the PIP group and various open forums, which I've previewed already, and the planning board did a lot of work with the master planning process as well. Next slide. The purpose of these changes is to align all of these commercial zones in the town. We want to develop, and we want to make sure that there's an environmental cleanup that's going to be sufficient for the site, and it's gonna provide us the removal of this abandoned and unsafe property. And we're gonna increase the revenue for the town from a tax perspective as well. We're gonna quickly take a quick look at a video that GFI Partners has put together to kind of show some renderings of what the site could look like in the future. Next slide. All right, next slide, please. Some of the net benefits of these changes increase—include the increased annual tax revenue. revenue of about a million dollars. We're also looking at a estimated projected increase for the site from 5.5 million to 66.5 million and nearly quadrupling the total industrial valuation of the town of Norfolk from 22 million to almost $90 million. There's going to generate an almost estimated $300,000 worth of permit fees. We're estimating annual CPA revenue of over $10,000. And there's going to be new economic development investment and seeding $55 million after remediation costs. There's a potential also for an estimated 350 new employees at the location, which would also strengthen the local economy. Next slide. In summary, there's still work to be done. Planning Board still has site approval. Site plan approval that needs to be done. There's a deed restriction currently on the property, and there's also conservation commission permitting. This is to say that there's a lot of work left to be done. We're not going to authorize this, and the builders are going to break ground tomorrow. So that's an important thing for you to know. There's also benefits for the town. We have a path towards environmental cleanup and the demolition of this abandoned site. We have obviously the increased tax revenue, and this also really aligns with our master plan, and it brings alignment across all of our commercial zoning districts. And so I leave you with the ask. Next slide. Which is to help bring this alignment across these zones. Again, we're looking to remove residential uses. We're developing commercial and lightweight industrial use. We're adding these non-residential uses to the C six that are already allowed in C one zoning district areas. We're prohibiting fulfillment center uses, and we're creating uniform dimensional requirements. And again, we're allowing the access to the Metacomic Greenway. Thank you.
So before we get into further discussion, it has been made clear to me that the language you see in the warrant is correct, that it is the end resulting bylaw that would result from this. However, the notation to what is new language and what is eliminated older language is not accurate. So what you were looking at in the warrant isn't accurate, a bylaw that you would be voting on, but it doesn't show the history of it. However, the handout that was available to people on the desk outside does show accurately all of the amendments in terms of what is new language and what is deleted language. So, Mr. Lutz, I would accept, assuming that you agree with that, a friendly amendment that the motion on the floor be based upon what is printed in the handout available to the town.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the article before us. I would like to adopt the language as printed in the handout that was outside.
And I don't need a second. We accept friendly amendments just as to form as to just the form of it. So I'm accepting that as the moderator because there's no change in the actual language that you are voting on. Mr. Rosenberg.
It's clear that the planning board put in a lot of work on this, and I thank them and congratulate them on on what they've done. I have a few questions, though. I'll try to include all the questions in my first time at the mic. First, for some of the potential uses listed in this, is this just speculation on part of the planning board? Or have there been inquiries to the planning board for somebody who would like to like to implement these uses? Second thing is that the section on fulfillment center says that it will not include typical warehouse uses. My question there is why not include typical warehouse uses? The presentation said that, if I heard you correctly, that Amazon wouldn't be permitted to come in. I think that Amazon basically has fulfillment centers, and if I understand this language correctly, and if I understand what Amazon does, it would allow them to have a fulfillment center here. And I noticed in the section on research and laboratory facilities, there's a sentence, this use can operate with minimal external effects such as noise, odor, odor, smoke, dirt, and vibration. The statement that it can operate that way is not a requirement that it should operate that way. So if the intention was to restrict research and laboratory facilities so that they must operate with minimal external effects, then the language should be changed to say must or shall rather than can, which is a statement of possibility but not requirement. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
One moment. So as to the last one, I would point out that any use is still going to go through rigorous review by the planning board, which would be able to condition, prohibit, or otherwise specific uses. But if we could get some answers on the fulfillment question and whether or not there's been discussion of specific uses, or if the proponent of this zoning wants to keep their options open with respect to everything that's on the use table there.
Yes, so with regards to the use table, the majority of the changes that are being made, I'd say 99% of the changes that are being made are in alignment with other uses that are already allowed in the other districts in the commercial zone on Route one Dedham Street. So the C one through on. And with regards to the fulfillment district, Rich, can you help me out with that one?
Sure.
So this is our town planner, Rich. Come on up.
So in regards to the fulfillment center.
You introduce yourself.
Oh, excuse me. Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. In regards to the fulfillment center in alignment with the community's desires, we were actually defining it and then prohibiting it. So that was the purpose of doing the way it was structured. So we wanted to say this is what a fulfillment center is. If you look at the definition, it really falls in line with what Amazon and alike would do in their type of facilities in terms of the use, which is coupled with the zoning changes, which limits the square foot of a building in terms of footprint to prohibit that type of activity.
And then just to add, with regards to the Amazon piece, when we had first discussed this location, the town really did not seem amenable to that kind of usage for the location, in particular with regards to traffic and what other communities around us had experienced previously. So we thought it was important enough for us to define it and then prohibit its use in that location.
Thank you for your responses. Sir, behind Mr. Rosenberg.
Hi. Michael Regan, 15 Chestnut Road. I just had a clarifying question. On the video, you showed the property divided into three sections, A, B, and C would be being the main business area. Is there currently a plan for A and C, or is that just proposed division of the property?
It's just a rendering of what it could look like in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weeder and then Ms. Maya.
Christopher Weeder, 64 Cleveland Street. I guess the warrant says that the reason we're doing this is to help to make strategic decisions on the property. I think the number one strategic decision on this property is to remove the hazardous waste, and I didn't see that on the board as the number one decision. You know, I think most people maybe not know, this property has a 100-foot berm, 40 feet high, and contains radium 226 on that property. Anybody looking at Google will see it's cancer-causing, DNA-causing. It is something we don't want to touch. So why are we changing the zoning before we have a plan to clean up the property? Years ago, we had someone come in who also bought the property, wanted to buy it, and we had a similar discussion as to changing the zoning. I'd hate to see us change the zoning and not take care of the cleanup first. We don't need a bylaw change for the zoning to clean up that property. And there's a ball field, there's a soccer field that many people in this room's children probably play at. Radium 226 is airborne as well as ingestion. So any disturbance of that property or any portion of that property that suddenly gets carved out to do development on could affect everybody in this room as well as anybody else. So I'd like to understand why are we changing the zoning now as opposed to having a clear path to cleaning up that property?
So I don't want to have back and forth. I'll recognize you, so we're not going to have get involved in conversations. I'll direct a question. I suspect that anyone who's building this is going to have to clean it up first, but if I could hear from the planning board or the planner as to how what those conversations were with the proponent of this zoning article.
Yes, there's a logical order of operations here that we have to follow, right? Part of that is also ensuring that we can keep the partner in in the process and involved and continuing to invest in the community as well. I've got four kids. Environmental disasters are not something that I want to have to deal with through any of their lifetimes. It's a fact of the matter for the town, and it's something that's going to get remediated. We need a path forward for that. In order for us to do that, this is the path of least resistance for us to get that done. If we do not engage in a manner like this, it might give us a repeat of the situation we were in before, where the purchaser of the property leaves and doesn't want to do anything for it, and we're still in the same position where we were before. But through our conversations with GFI, they fully intend to invest the money that's required to perform the cleanup. We're also looking at federal funds from the EPA to assist with that as well. And the important thing about the relationship with GFI is that they don't just build and walk away from their properties, they also manage them as well. And so they're intending to be a part of the community for a very long time, which I think is very important.
Thank you. Ms. Maya. Mr. Rosenberg, I want to hear from some other speakers before we get to you. Ms. Maya.
Hi, Sandy Maitt, 8 Eric Road. I had a couple of questions. I appreciate the question from Mr. Weeder. Is there any financial benefit to the town for doing it now as opposed to waiting till spring town meeting after the comprehensive site assessment is reported in March of 2025? Do we have any funding from the EPA that you're talking about that we need to do this now?
I'm going to allow that. We're straying a little bit from from what the purpose is here, but I'll allow the question if you have an answer for it.
Sure. The answer is this is what it made the most sense for us from a planning board with all of the other things that we have on our docket as well that we would like to get in front of the town. It doesn't have any weighing on us waiting on a report or anything. As I mentioned, we have enough restrictions in place that the town stays safe. There's no financial benefit, but there's also no financial penalty for us visiting this at this meeting at this point in time. It's more just a procedural thing for us to get out of the way and allow everyone to move forward and, you know, really provide us some inkling that we've got a positive way forward on this site that's been abandoned to this point.
Thank you. Mr. Lutz, did you have a comment or question? Rich, I haven't called on you. I don't think we need to. I think that we have an answer there. We're fine.
It's a purpose question. Answer spots.
I'm not asking you to to give a response. I think there was an adequate response there.
Mr. Moderator, it was my intention to try to address the requirements under the for the property owner under the state law, the governor's cleanup, governance cleanup. Is that outside the scope or?
It's a fair comment.
So Chapter 21E and the Mass Contingency Plan is what governs the cleanup of the site. The old property owner is not going to pay for the cleanup. Any current property owner or any future property owner is going to be is is responsible for the cleanup. Those property owners need to begin to make decisions on investments that involve their legal requirements to clean up the property but also involve redeveloping the property. With new zoning in place, they can begin to seek funding, financing for for redevelopment, things like that, that does not obviate any requirements of them under the state law to do the cleanup.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Ms. Maya, did you have a brief follow-up? Because I want to get back to Mr. Rosenberg.
I do have another comment. All right, so there's multiple uses that you have identified in C six that are not going to be allowed per their cleanup of the radium. The radium is going to be cleaned up for just industrial, commercial use, and you're saying yes to items like nursing home, hospice, respite facility, public educational facilities, religious assisted living facilities by planning, no special permit by the zoning board, adult daycare and childcare facility, animal hospital and clinic. So I don't think those are going to be allowed uses. And can someone speak to the radium cleanup?
If we have an answer, Rich or someone from the planning board side, I'm not sure if that's a little overly technical. I think that's a little speculative and out in front of us, but if that if it's been part of your discussion, fine. If it hasn't, then I'll take that just as a comment for moving forward by by Ms. Maya.
If it's if you're going to allow it, I would like to make a friendly amendment to take them out of that zoning.
That wouldn't be a friendly amendment.
Okay, it would be another type of amendment.
If you have a formal amendment and you want to change the uses here, then you're going to have to make a formal amendment. Right.
All right. Great. Does somebody want to comment? Do we have anyone?
If you can, I don't want anyone to speculate here.
I guess before that, if I may say, that there are uses that are on in every different district that we have in the town of Norfolk that rely upon different components, whether they're feasible or not to do. So if in the end, the radiation doesn't get to that level that supports that use, then that's nothing they're not going to be able to do. Just like there's not enough of market demand to support a commercial use because the market doesn't support it or the site doesn't support it. There are many uses that not every use that we have in this use table for this district and the others will necessarily happen because of a zoning change. They're in there, and they could happen, but it doesn't mean they're going to happen. So if what you say you suggest doesn't happen, then that might not be used as contemplated. It doesn't necessarily mean be stricken from here by the facts of what happens on the ground will determine whether it happens or not, not by this bylaw.
Thank you. So, hold on. I haven't recognized you. You've now spoken twice. If there's a very brief follow-up on only what's spoken on so far, I will allow it. However, before we go any further on this, I want to say what I want to see and what I don't want to see. If people are opposed to this article or have a comment on this article based on their concerns around environmental issues, I want to hear that. What we're not going to engage in in this body is a lengthy debate as to what is going on there environmentally. This body is if there's a concern and a few facts that support your concern, I want to hear it. We're not going to have a discussion by experts or non-experts, as the case may be, as to exactly what exists in that realm, because I don't have anyone here that can qualify as an expert to discuss that. So I am thrilled that you came and want to discuss your concerns on environmental stuff, but I want to keep it on the fairly basic level. So if you have a follow-up on what you said already, this is your third time at the mic, then I'll allow it, but then I also want to get to other people who haven't spoke yet or have only spoken more.
I would like to make an amendment, then, and I'll write it down.
Okay, that's great. So I haven't heard yet from Mr. Bakkenowski. I want to hear from people for the first time before I hear from people for a second or or a third time. And I know Andy's going to keep it brief because he always does.
Always do. Andy Bakkenowski, Noggin's Avenue, sitting in the Board of Health. In 2021, I relinquished my LSP license, Life Site Professional. The last time I was on this property was in 2013, and prior to that, I think I read every single report, including all the new ones because of who my employer was at the time, and were was more interested in protecting the water supply for the prison. Anyways, I think where there's a major disconnect in what we're talking about is the fact that the Mass Contingency Plan overrides a lot of the zoning aspects of it because the LSP of record for GFI has said they'll be possibly putting an active and use limitation on it, which is a zoning restriction. And that's something that hasn't been discussed. Is it relevant now? Not yet. I'm not going to say it isn't. It's not yet. So the question is if that actually happens. The Mass Contingency Plan also is a risk-based driven remediation process, which looks at certain levels, certain contaminants, and what are the exposure levels. So Ms. Maitt's comments about nursing homes, all that, that that sort of fits a definition of an institution. The institution has specific risk-based standards, which are a little bit more restrictive than residential because of the contact or potential contact. And again, the Mass Contingency Plan does look at current and future uses. We have no idea what the future uses holds because GFI may start digging away back there, and they're not going to they're going to find something. They had no idea. They had no idea what was there. They still have a lot of work to do out there and it's not today, tomorrow, do I think that the zoning should be done? Yes, the zoning changes should be done. It has to be done. Should it be done right now? If it's for financing, sure, that makes sense. But at the same time, we could be back here next spring, we could be back here next fall, changing it again because they realize that they can't develop something because the contamination is either cost prohibitive to remove or it's so expensive or it's going to take so much longer that it's going to change the development schedule. We just don't know that. I can't guess and I know GFI doesn't know that either. And that's something that we're just going to have to, you know, you kind of have to live with it.
So as always, we, we benefit from your expertise on these things, Andy, but this is the kind of thing that I want to stay away from. So the Mass Contingency Plan has a whole other precedental authority that will override any other local authority. It is not zoning, as you indicated, with an activity using, that is not zoning. I am happy, again, to get current concerns about the cleanup. We are not here to discuss the Mass Contingency Plan. It obviously impacts this project. It obviously impacts the zoning. And as you said, a lot of this is speculative. I don't want town meeting to be a place of speculation per se about something other than this zoning. They have to comply with these state things. We're here to vote on the zoning. I want people to express concerns about this zoning we're here today, not what it may be amended to. That doesn't mean you can't express a concern about this zoning over environmental. I just don't want to get too deep into the science. Yourself said you haven't been there since 2013. So, fair. But we do benefit from these comments. So I will hear from Mr. Rosenberg.
As I understood what was explained, the section of the fulfillment center was intended, excuse me, to prevent operations such as Amazon. My reading of this is that it does not do that. It defines an operation, basically an Amazon-style fulfillment center, and then talks about some things that the fulfillment center could not include, but they are not, but they are things that could easily be avoided in an Amazon fulfillment center. So this paragraph, this section seems in fact to permit an Amazon fulfillment center with some adjustments to make it not a typical warehouse and that fulfillment center is in fact not a typical warehouse. It's something where there's a lot of turnover of stock and it also prohibits retail sales. Retail sales don't normally happen out of an Amazon fulfillment center. And it prohibits local delivery and that could also be avoided. So I think if the intention is to prohibit operations such as Amazon, this section needs to be rewritten to indicate that fulfillment centers are not permitted if, and then this pick up the first, you know, six lines of this as what's not prohibited, not permitted. And, and so this basically seems to have the wrong effect. It seems to be permitting Amazon operations as long as they're adjusted to avoid these things.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. I will note that in the, the appendix to the warrant, there is changes to the use table as well that are proposed to this bylaw. And under fulfillment center, it is stated as no across the board with respect to all, all districts. So it does prohibit fulfillment centers as, Mr. Weeder?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess to follow up Mr. Lutz's comments and also Mr. Bakkenowski's, is there any reason why the developer cannot continue his work on cleanup and evaluation of the property without changing its zoning? Because as Mr. Bakkenowski said, we may be back here again for another zoning change. Is there any reason at this time he cannot do his work because he bought the property fully aware of what the conditions were up there, I am sure, because it's gone through this process multiple times? Is there any reason why he cannot continue doing the work up there without the zoning change at this time?
We're not going to get into what the developer can or cannot do. This zoning has some limitations, I will state anecdotally because this is what I do for a living, represent zoning boards as well as some developers, that a developer isn't going to sink a bunch of money into something unless they know what they can do. So, but we're also not going to get into their mindset here. They are here. I have no interest in calling them because that's not a fact that, that we need from them.
I'm, I'm not asking, I'm not asking that question.
If you're arguing that rhetorically, then we understand.
Well, I'm asking is to say, the only way to do strategic decisions on this property between the town and the, and the developer is to change its zoning. So I want understanding, can the work on this property be done at this time without changing zoning, which is what we're here for? Fair question?
Fair question, but we're not going to enter it because I'm not calling on the developer at this meeting. We are hearing from the people that are voters in this town.
Okay, but I was told by Mr. Lutz that the reason for the zoning change is so the developer can move forward. That he's, he's made a statement.
We've already heard a response to that.
I have not heard that response.
We've heard it from the planning board and we, and I'm satisfied with the response.
I'm not.
Well, then you don't have to vote in favor, but we're not getting into an argument about it. So thank you.
So we're not going to discuss it. All right.
I do not see any further. Mr. Oliveri?
Jack Oliveri, Forbrow Place. I, I just have a, a comment on, and I'd like to reinforce one that was already made, on the research and laboratory facilities. I think that last two lines should be quantified. It's a very qualitative description right now and I can see where it's, it should, in my opinion, it should have some quantitative limits to the noise, odor, smoke, dirt and vibration. That's my comment.
I appreciate the comment. Thank you. Mr. Byron, are you rising to speak?
Hi, Walter Byron, 80 Fruit Street. There's been a long, long effort to find a use for this property that the developer can accept, that the local residents can accept and that the town can accept. And here we have, I think, a sweet spot where the local residents have given input and can live with the proposed use of the property as opposed to the first offer as to what to use, which is the fulfillment center. The town is going to get a net positive cash flow with a limited demand on town services for fire, police, DPW and schools. And the developer has come up with a proposal that will allow them to make a profit, which is very important to them, otherwise they're going to walk away as, as others have in the past. So this is an opportunity to give that developer an assurance from the town that they can go forward with a proposal that hits those other three, those other two areas, acceptance by the town residents and acceptance by the town because it's the right thing for the town. So I urge you to please pass this, this zoning change. Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to change the following on the Schedule of Use Regulations Attachment 1, change from yes to no or from, by special permit, ZB, zoning board, to no. These items, public educational, religious.
Slow, slow down.
Okay. Public, educational, religious, assisted living facilities, there's a whole list after that, nursing home, hospice, there's a whole list after that, adult daycare, adult daycare ancillary to the assisted living facility, animal hospital and clinic, adult daycare and childcare facility. Actually, I have adult daycare twice, so I'll take that off.
So your motion is to change all of those uses, the C6, to a no?
To a no.
And you have that in writing?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can you give us just a few seconds of why you're doing it?
It's, it's not going to be allowed because I know, I'm on the PIP, they're not going to clean up the radiation to anything except for commercial, industrial. All right, I can show you why, but that's the simplest. They're only going to allow commercial, industrial on the cleanup of the radium.
That, that's your view, Jordan?
It's, it's.
So it's been moved in second. Any comments or questions on that? There was a number of uses moving from allowed or allowed by special permit to no. So if people have comments as to whether or not that impacts this proposed development or are in favor or not in favor, it obviously limits the scope of allowable or specially allowed uses in that zone. Rich, do you have a comment there or no? You're standing at the mic.
So if what's in this table, some of the uses that, those are allowed within that district today as we sit here? So the only things that we're changing is what's, you know, bold and strike through, so.
Why don't you, why don't you be more specific?
Okay. So, public educational, I think was one of them? Sandy?
What's that?
Public education was one of them?
That would be allowed regardless under zoning because it's exempt use.
That was one of them, yes.
Nursing home?
Yes.
Okay. That's allowed today?
Okay. So keep going down the list, that's helpful.
Could you go through your list again briefly? Sorry.
I don't have a list right now.
Carol has the list. She's bringing it to you.
She did mention public educational, yeah, that's a protected use, I get it. Religious similarly, protected use. Assisted living is already allowed there today in, in the district?
So here's, here's what, here's a concern that I have and I'm, and I'm glad we're having this discussion. The, the body here, the town meeting, has notice of the changes that we're making to zoning. They don't have notice of prohibitions of things that were, that were, they were leaving alone. So what I don't think I can consider in the scope of your amendment is making changes to the zoning that they weren't touching. So if they were changing any of the existing zoning to changing something from not allowed to allowed or adding new uses to allow them, then I would allow an amendment. What I'm not going to allow, because I don't think there's enough notice for this body, is changes to things that people already thought were allowed or already knew were allowed. So among the list that was created, I would rely on, on Mr. McCarthy and the planning board to tell me which of those are currently allowed or which of those were not being touched by this proposed amendment, because I'm not going to allow amendments on those because I don't think there was adequate notice for hearing or for people to anticipate that they would be discussed.
So the, the adult daycare one would, ancillary to assisted living facility, that one currently is yes, it's being proposed to change, excuse me, currently no, being proposed to change to yes, so that was one. That one is up for consideration.
Again, so which one was that?
Adult daycare ancillary to an assisted living facility.
Okay, so that's a, that's a new change and she wants to move that to no. I'll accept that amendment.
The adult daycare is allowed currently, there's no change to that one, so that one doesn't qualify. The only other one, animal hospital. No, that one, it's actually that one. There's only one. Just the one I read to you.
So all the other uses that were proposed to move to no are current, weren't currently on the list of proposed amendments, moving them around at all. It's just amounts to adult daycare accessory.
To assisted, assisted living.
So I, I think that it would be appropriate in the future for people to propose zoning to a citizen's petition or otherwise, that the planning board could hear in the spring if you wanted to change existing stuff. But what I don't think is fair is for folks to tune in for the first time today with a use table that was not discussed by the planning board or the proponent because they were yeses and all of a sudden changed them to nos without that discussion. We're here to talk about just the changes that were being proposed. So if you think any of the changes that were being proposed, they but mentioned just one, is something that you would like to move to a no, then that is fine because that's newly proposed here. But I don't think there's been enough notice to change things that town meeting had no notice of them being altered by this bylaw. And I know that that's confusing and unclear and I'm happy to explain it further.
I'll withdraw the amendment if it's down to just one. It's, I do have one other question though. What is the commercial of, in the design review? You said only, it's in blue, so I assume it's a change. Only those buildings with less than 100,000 square feet of usable interior square footage shall be subject to review by the Design Review Board. Why is it limited to only those with less than 100,000? Because I think all the buildings are more.
So the, the way you saw the potential layout in terms of the proposed development, the larger buildings are within the commercial industrial subdivision. Those are the largest sized buildings. They will have design review through the planning board and the planning board will weigh in the design review. The buildings that would be smaller in size, that front along Dedham Street would go to the Design Review Board. The reason why is because the scale, the architectural design of buildings that you'll see along Dedham Street are much different and more in keeping with architectural design for larger scale buildings in the town of Norfolk. The larger industrial type buildings aren't the same. So those will be reviewed through the planning board review process and it'll be through them. The commercial ones will be through the Design Review Board. In either case, though, just to clarify, Design Review still goes to the planning board anyway, in the end. So they make recommendations on those as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kristen Beulie, 5 Shady Way. I'm, I understand that the owner would like it rezoned so that they can possibly go through with whatever plans they have. I understand that we want there to be environmental remediation. I don't understand why we would not rezone tonight. I think I'm having trouble understanding the oppositional viewpoint and I'm just wondering if someone can speak to what the downsides to rezoning tonight would be. Does that make sense?
If, again, I think the, the planning board didn't really express much of a view except their kind of, it's at hand, they have, this town meeting available to them, we're here.
Right. So I guess I'm just trying to understand, we, we want to rezone it. If they move forward with building, they have to do the environmental remediation. Is there a negative I'm missing of rezoning?
So listen, one thing I don't want to get into and I expressed the position earlier as moderator, that I don't want to call upon the as moderator, that I don't want to call upon the developer to state what their business interests might be in, in terms of moving forward now, because what I'm interested in is facts and not like kind of a business kind of decision. But.
I think I mean from a town, from a town perspective. Why would we, what would be the downside for us?
I, I can only imagine that it's just, we'd be accelerating an opportunity by moving quicker. But I, I don't want to speak for the planning board because they're the ones that have discussed this with GFI, nothing. So if, if that's been discussed, it's kind of hearsay-ish, but feel free to state it.
To respond to weave this together was that we started doing a zoning study. We'd be in the town looking at that property. One of the things that first came up was the thought that this might be high density residential development. If you remember who was around back then, that's where we first looked at it. Through the planning process, engaging with the citizens, which you're all a part of, and with GFI, said to the town, the planning board and so forth, that redevelopment of this property is the vehicle that we need to clean the property up. To do that cleanup, our business is in commercial industrial development. We believe the way we are positioned within the market in terms of our type of company that we are, and they own the site, previous proposals were not from owners of the site, just to clarify, that point that was raised earlier tonight. This is what we need to do. This is a step on a path. This step, hopefully, if it were to be achieved, then we come back to the town to go through the permitting process, to address some of the issues that people raised here tonight, and incorporate them into the site plan process. Simultaneously, they are working on the assessment and evaluation of the property so that way things line up to go moving forward as opposed to doing one, and then we do the other, then we do the other. So that's what they're doing. They reached out to the town of Norfolk to engage the Environmental Protection Agency, to have them assist with the site assessment. That's the type of stuff that's going on there as well. So this has been a collaborative effort to get to this point.
Thank you, Ms. McCarty. Ms. Ballish, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Kristen Ballish, very short, 15 Kingsbury Road. I'd like to call the question. May I call the question?
You may. I think we're there anyway, so, so as to avoid another thing. Mr. Rosenberg, you've already spoken three times, so I wasn't going to take.
I've spoken twice.
Well, there's a two, two-time limit, so I think we're there.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I have.
No, no, no. We're there.
I have a question related to the existing text that I haven't mentioned before.
You have spoken twice now. I, I think we're, I think we're ready to move forward. So seeing no one else at the mic, I don't see the need to take a motion on calling the question. This is a zoning article. It requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of this zoning article say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
I'm going to do it by a show of hands. All those in favor raise one hand. All those opposed, one hand. It clearly passes by a two-thirds majority. And I want to state again, I really appreciate all the interest in the comments on the environmental issue. I have lived in town for a long time. I know there's issues up there. I expect this is not the last we've heard of it, either at the planning board or at this meeting. So I do appreciate you did fore- I think it's helpful. So moving on, Article Six. Ms. Hickman, welcome.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $4,345,042 to fund the construction, reconstruction, architectural engineering and project management services and construction administration related to the Freeman Kennedy School expansion project. Said sum to be expended under the direction of the Freeman Kennedy School Building Committee, including all expenses incidental and related thereto, and further to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow such sum pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes therefore.
We have a second. Seconded, Ms. Hickman?
Yes. The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. Article Six would authorize the town to borrow funds for the first phase of a project for the expansion of the Freeman Kennedy School. Should the article be adopted, a positive vote to exclude this debt from the proposition two and a half cap at a special town election will also be required. The advisory committee held a meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, to hear a presentation from the superintendent school committee, school building committee on the project. The presentation included information on previous proposed projects, the process of developing the current proposal, issues that have been faced by some surrounding communities, the status of the current bid solicitation, and the timeline for the construction should the town authorize the borrowing. The building committee discussed the school expansion project initiated in 2017 due to enrollment challenges. A high-level conceptual design study was conducted in 2017. The most recent study led to a $37.9 million permanent building addition proposal with six new classrooms and a preschool expansion. Modular options were considered but deemed less durable and costlier. The building committee emphasized the importance of addressing enrollment challenges now to avoid future costs and disruptions. The project was presented as a responsible investment in the town's future growth and development. The superintendent and building committee recommended moving forward with the permanent addition to manage costs and ensure long-term educational needs. Article Six requests $4,345,042 for the schematic design portion of the addition only. The full cost is to, is projected to be $37.9 million, which would be reduced by the $4.3 million sum when it comes before the town. The advisory committee unanimously, unanimously voted to recommend that town approve this article.
Thank you, Ms. Hickman. I believe we have a presentation from the school committee.
Good evening. I'm Midora Champagne, two Seneca Street, resident of Norfolk since 2007, member of the school committee since 2018. I'm here to just tell you about how we got to this point. So a brief rundown of the work that's been done since 2017, up until about last fall. Subsequently, Grace Lockhead, who is the chair of the building committee, will run you through the work that's been done for approximately the last year. And Dr. Alardi is here to fill in any gaps that we missed and answer any questions that folks might have. So as was just mentioned in the warrant rundown, in and around 2017, the school district started to note an increase in enrollment that was outpacing what had been anticipated and outpacing the district's ability to manage class sizes, essentially. So in 2017, the town at Fall Town Meeting appropriated a relatively small amount of money to, I can never tell if I'm close enough, to do a high-level review of whether or not a permanent building addition would solve the enrollment issues that were being experienced. That passed at town meeting, and an architectural firm was retained to undertake that study. simultaneous with that, in 2018, some enrollment and demographic studies were done for forecasting purposes. Grace, continue. Thanks. Those trends from those studies indicated that enrollment growth would continue into the coming decade and would outpace the physical capabilities of the current facilities to hold students, essentially. The buildings we have were going to be too small, given the anticipated growth. Obviously, a building addition was going to be a costly undertaking. It is still, as was just mentioned, going to be a costly undertaking. The school committee reviewed the results of the high-level study that was done and discussed those with the select board in 2018 and 2019. And an additional enrollment study was commissioned just to make sure that nothing had been missed. The enrollment studies, again, came back indicating that growth would continue to spike, and that was anecdotally what we were seeing in the classroom as well. Class sizes continued to grow, and as we entered the pandemic, we began to experience a situation where certain special classrooms, I guess you would refer to them as, so music, art, library space, the IT lab, the computer lab at the schools, had to be repurposed into instructional spaces. In 2020, 2021, and 2022, in coordination with the select board, because this process is a joint process when these applications are filed, the school committee and select board filed an application with the Massachusetts School Building Authority requesting possible grant funding to expand the facilities at Freeman Kennedy. All three of those applications were unfortunately not successful. And so in the, sorry, in the spring of 2022, we submitted an additional application to MSBA, but also began reviewing what the next steps would be if grant funding was not going to be feasible for the town. At the Spring Town Meeting in 2022, funds were appropriated to conduct an independent feasibility analysis for a permanent building addition at Freeman Kennedy, assuming that MSBA funding would not be forthcoming. That was approved at the Spring Town Meeting. Subsequent to that, through a selective bidding process, AI3 Architects was hired to undertake a feasibility study for the permanent building addition. That was completed in the inner around fall of last year, and given the escalation in construction costs in the wake of the pandemic, given other expenses the town was facing, obviously some large capital projects that have been approved and are underway at this point, the school committee elected, with feedback from various town boards and committees, to request funding for an additional feasibility study, this time to undertake a review of whether or not a scaled-back modular version of some sort of expanded facility at Freeman Kennedy would be more cost-effective. In addition to that, the school committee requested that an independent building committee be formed. So that would involve members of the school committee and then individuals appointed by the select board to participate in the second round of feasibility assessment. That occurred at the last Fall Town Meeting. That passed at the last Fall Town Meeting. Additional funds were appropriated for the additional feasibility study, and the building committee was formed in, I think, January of this year. So at that point, the, that takes me to the end of my slide. I'm going to hand it over to Grace Lockhead, who is the chair of the building committee. She is also a member of the school committee, to discuss how we have gotten to the point where we are today, to come forward with this ask from the town, and the work that has been done by the committee. I would say this work has been going on since 2017. It's almost eight years at this point. I have tried to be very brief in my rundown of how we got to approximately Fall Town Meeting of last year, and I know Grace is going to try and give a, a thorough but efficient overview of what we've been doing over the past year. That said, we are all obviously here to answer any questions that I'm sure will come up once the presentation is complete. We have, I think we're missing only one member of the building committee tonight who had some travel engagements he could not get out of. And we also, as I'm looking at the crowd, have a number of the, I think, 12 school committee members that have reviewed this over the past seven or eight years at this point. So happy to take any questions as they come. And Grace? Hi, Grace Lockhead, 166 Farrington Ave. Can we go to the next slide? Awesome. So as Midora mentioned, last fall, at town meeting, a building committee was created that would undertake another feasibility study exploring potential modular solutions and other creative solutions to the enrollment growth and overcrowding, as well as completing a third demographic study to ensure that prior trends were holding true. The committee is comprised by two school committee members, myself and Midora, as well as three Norfolk residents who applied and were appointed by the select board. We have Jason Whalen, Mike Ryan, and Mike Lucarello. Dr. Alardi and Justin Casanova-Davis are also part of the building committee with the help and support of Matt Malanich of Facilities and AI3 Architects, specifically Justin Tebow. So using the demographic study and design of potential modulators and their associated costs, the building committee did vote unanimously on a solution to be brought forward to the school committee, select board, advisory board, and ultimately tonight at town meeting that will be presented in the following slides and was foreshadowed earlier. Next slide, please. So the building committee's first order of business was to select a new demographer. We hired DAA or demographic analytic advisors to conduct a more in-depth demographic study using address level data as well as trends, approved residential projects, and the list goes on and on. Hopefully, some of you were able to look at that information online. The study did conclude that despite COVID, the prior two demographic studies remain accurate, and actually, long-term growth is expected to increase higher than prior studies. Next slide, please. So this is another way to look at real numbers that are showing the actual enrollment through this current year with projected increases next year. As you can see, K through two at HOD, this does not include pre-K, is up about 100 students in the last 10 years, with Freeman, grades three through six, up about 40 students, for a total district increase of 135 students. Next slide, please. Okay. With confirmation that the projected growth will continue, the committee, along with AI3, worked through multiple options, both of a refresh of the original brick and mortar that was explored the year prior, as well as three different modular options at two different finish levels each. Costs associated with each option are on the slide above, as well as costs for each finish level. So those are, those are separate finish levels for each modular option. The permanent addition, so that first column all the way on the left, attaches the current academic wings across the current access road in the back of Freeman, and was repriced using current rates. Some may know that the original building was designed so that that addition, if necessary, would fit in right there. Modular option one gave us the most apples-to-apples comparison to the brick and mortar. So you see, it's a two-story layout in the same area, and that would be attached to the current brick and mortar at the academic wings in a similar fashion. The second modular option is moved back from the building, avoiding that access road. But due to space constraints, needs to move, the layout has to be in L configuration. You can see on the screen, again, this avoids a lot of tree removal and, and changes the access road. Modular option three was our only one-story option. We wanted to look into that just because we wanted to see if we could gain some cost saved by not having to have elevators, stairs, et cetera. Unfortunately, the square footage needed, the only place to put that one-story modular option is in the green space out in front of Freeman. So as you can see on the slide, the building committee unanimously voted to bring forward the permanent build as the final recommendation. I'm going to walk through the permanent build, the design and rationale for selecting this build in the following slides. Next slide. So at the previous iteration of the feasibility study, and with the consistency in the demographic results, we were able to be comfortable that the required space required that had been determined of 36,000-ish square feet was still accurate. So that number was used for the modular options as well. And this number was derived by AI3 in conjunction with a lot of our education staff with early childhood, art, technology, STEAM, general ed, and planning, as well as special ed. You can see the breakdown of the space in this gray box. Six general ed classrooms, seven pre-K classrooms, plus special ed and other, other things that will be in there. Next slide. Okay. So this. So this is the actual floor plan of the proposed building. It's within the red lines on this slide. The first floor is the pre-K portion of the project. This is only for the pre-K program. It is attached to the buildings, but it requires key card to get in and out so that the older children cannot enter that area of the, of the building. Areas shaded in green are prior educational space that has been repurposed in those academic hallways for other programming, such as art or other global programming that all students need to use. So with this proposed addition, the second floor will allow us to reclaim these green spaces and convert them back into education to ensure that our grade levels can remain in consistent wings. Next floor, or next slide. So this is the second floor of the addition. This would be accessed and used by our current Freeman population of grades 3 through 6. As mentioned, it would reclaim our Maker Space, STEAM class, art classrooms. They'd be located in a central location, so students will have equal access to these facilities and not have to travel throughout the building into another grade's academic wing in order to access the facilities. So there are also, just to point out, six, the six classrooms are here that will allow Freeman to absorb those higher class sizes as they continue to roll up from the HOD up into the Freeman Kennedy. Next slide. Okay. So how did we get to the brick-and-mortar option? As Midora mentioned, the team has been meeting, or the committee has been meeting, for nearly a year, often more than once a month, at least once a month. And when we looked at all three modular options, we ran into higher maintenance costs with heating and cooling, higher long-term costs for the town when these buildings reach end of life. And that longevity between Option A and Option B, Option A, or the higher-level finishes, gives you about a 20-year longevity, depending on maintenance, of course. Option B, which is the lower-end finishes, gives us about 15 years, again, depending on maintenance. So that's for all modulators. The detached modulators incorporated more concerns, most concerning being student safety and negative impact on student time and learning, because you will have children moving from building to building throughout the day, multiple times potentially, to access special services, lunch, any of their specials. So there's that. It's also a third site, if there were ever an emergency that would need to be locked Also considers the impact on shared service delivery with our special ed, reading and mass support, nursing, and also loss of green space in the one-story, on the one-story, which is used by students during recess or free time, as well as Norfolk recreation. So with the brick-and-mortar option, we found there's no negative impact on learning, actually streamlines learning in many ways. Students can navigate throughout the building independently, so if someone has to go to the nurse or has early dismissal, they can go and bring themselves down to the nurse's office. They don't need an escort. And perhaps most importantly to commit, to the committee, the longevity of the building, the brick-and-mortar, would be 50-plus years, which is more than double the highest level end of the modular options. Next slide, please. Okay. Why now? You know, as Midora mentioned, there have been multiple projects recently in town, and understanding this is a costly endeavor, the committee actually spent a lot of time discussing this. Our enrollment continues to grow. It's evidenced by not only the projections, but also our current class sizes, the number of classes per grade that we currently have. We are currently out of space at the HOD with the only space in the entire building that can possibly absorb any growth being the art room, because music and technology are already run on carts. We already don't have space in the library, as the librarian had to give up her office for a classroom need. So literally, the only thing left to put on a cart would be art. If we move forward now, and this does go through, the building would be ready in fall 2027. So that means that any further delays will push out class sizes potentially over current maximums and require further creative solutions in the Freeman that we've had to unfortunately undertake in the HL of Day building in order to get us to that 2027 date. You know, probably most compelling, I think, for the Building Committee were the projected costs and just showing the cost estimates that were done on the three different feasibility studies. They were all, all estimates were done by the same, the same group, PMNC. In 2019, from 2019 to 2023, the costs escalated by almost $15 million. Obviously, COVID was in there, but I think that's a really tough one to swallow. Then just between last fall, when we were getting ready to look at this project, and this fall, the, and this, by the way, is just soft costs, so that's why the numbers looked different, sorry, hard costs. It's nearly $2 million since last Fall Town Meeting. So construction costs escalate typically between 4% and 12% per year, as estimated by, you know, professional estimators. All right. Next slide. All right. The money slide. So current vote is for the schematic design and construction documents, so that at next Fall's Town Meeting, should this move forward, we would come to the meeting with a bid in hand of the exact project costs, which is similar to how the fire station was, was approached. The total amount of this initial ask, or this initial need, is $4,345,000 and 40, and The handouts that hopefully you picked out and up on your way in have the total tax breakdown, but on average, the average single-family home in Norfolk, at the first year, average tax bill for the average home would go up $171.92. And again, that's for this first phase. All right. Next slide. All right. Tentative timeline. So assuming this is approved tonight, it would have to move forward to a special ballot vote in January. Should this pass at the ballot, we would begin work on the deny, on the design, as well as bidding process, and we would come to next Fall Town Meeting with documents at hand and a vote, to ask for a vote to proceed with the project through construction that would also need to be followed by a ballot vote. Should that pass, so that's four things that need to pass, then construction will be able to begin in the fall of 2025, with estimated completion date of August 2027 for opening in the 2027-28 school year. So again, that was a lot of information, and hopefully people had time to review our building website, but I'd like to ask Ingrid if she'd like to say a few words.
So thank you for giving us the chance to present tonight. Just a couple of things that I want to highlight in addition to what Midora and Grace have spoken to. The Building Committee and the multiple school committees that have been following this project over the past eight years, I think, have been very, very respectful and sensitive to the fact that we know this is going to have a tax impact on residents. The purpose for the proposal that we're bringing forward, which is a single solution to a building shortfall in terms of space at two different sites. We could have considered expanding at HOD and expanding at Freeman Kennedy. We also looked at the potential of a third site. This was the most cost-efficient and cost-effective, to do one building project that would meet the long-term needs of the town in two locations. There was a very thoughtful process in, in terms of moving the preschool over to the Freeman Kennedy. We looked at many, many different configurations, and I know people have asked about why we didn't look at moving another grade level up. In many communities, the preschool and early childhood is a standalone center, which it would serve effectively in this proposal. The reason for moving the preschool up is the preschool is not a full-day program overall. They don't access the cafeteria space, the gymnasium space, the art and music, which would put Freeman beyond its capacity. So moving the preschool allows integrity to the remaining growth in Freeman Kennedy and to access to those additional sites. Again, the Building Committee, throughout the feasibility process, asked tough questions. Originally, we were looking at a space that was about 42,000. I think really thoughtfully reduced the scope, reduced the size, wanted to make sure we're only building for what we critically need. As we've said, HL of Day is totally out of space right now. That has a direct impact on quality of instruction and programming. So our music program is on the cart. We are very proud of our music instruction. We have a great band program. We feed students into the KP program. Music is really critical to whole child development. Right now, we have a lot of instruments and movement materials that we generally use that are housed on the stage and not able to be, not able, we're not able to use them right now, because music's traveling space to space. We have a waitlist of 70 families for our preschool program and no capacity to expand to meet critical needs in town. We provide preschool education to students who we are required to provide education to by law, who have a disability as of their third birthday. We, the demographic study we just did, we're looking at expecting another 200 students over the next 10 years. We don't have anywhere to put these students. Again, we expect special education populations, based on the trend data that we've seen, to grow commensurate to that, which means we're going to need additional preschool classrooms just to meet our mandates. So again, I think, I thank the Building Committee and the town who have worked with us for many years. I think what they're bringing forward today is the most cost-effective and efficient solution. Again, we're trying to avoid additional costs by delaying the project. We know that if we delay, we will have to look at modular options or some other way of housing any further growth at HL of Day. That's a disposable cost to the town. It's not a great solution. So we're trying to avoid increased cost escalation through just postponement, as well as the cost of temporary solutions. Happy to take any questions people might have.
Thank you, Dr. Alardi. Questions, comments?
Hi, Jack Oliver-Aiken. I have a bunch of questions.
A bunch?
A bunch. Should I do it in two steps or one?
Let's see where you are. Maybe we can kind of group them up a little bit.
Okay. So let's look, I wanted to look a little bit at the history of what has been going on in the town. We built a police station not too long ago for $20 million. We built a fire station recently for $25 million. We contributed to the vocational school. We were generous in that. Now we're being asked to fund $37 million for the Freeman addition. That's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. So my first question is, we as the taxpayers need to know what the full impact is. I don't think we've seen the full, full impact yet of even the police station and the fire station construction and the vocational school. That hasn't hit us. If I'm, if I'm wrong, tell me. But I don't think all of that has hit us yet, and now we're being asked to fund another $37 million. So my first question is, how does the town, how does Board of Selectment, and how does the, the School Building Committee expect seniors on a fixed income to pay for this? And how do they expect, how does the town expect families who are trying to put their kids through college to afford this? This may be necessary. It may be needed. But how are seniors and families with, with children who are going to college supposed to take care of this? So that's my first question. My second question is, what is Plan B if the override doesn't pass? Is that the modular solution we're talking about? I'd like to know. Also, if Rentham and Plainville are also experiencing student growth, how long is it before we're going to need additions at KP Junior, KP Middle School and KP High? Has anybody looked at that? In five years or six years, are we going to be asked to fund expansions there? And I, I'd also like to know, how long, how long is the bond or the override to the bond? How long is that going to last? And the final question is, I saw numbers up there that said that in 2019, I think it was, it was 12, $12 million, and in 2024, it's $29 to $30 million? Are you kidding me? Inflation has gone from in 2020 to 2024, 20%, 20% in three and a half, four years. That's a 250% increase in building costs. Why is that so much? Why are building costs going up 250% since 2019 to 2024, when overall inflation is only roughly 20%? Something's not right. Something is not right. So I, I think, you know, my, my impression is that we need a lot more information about the, the costs and how we're supposed to afford this. And specifically, once all the police station and the debts we have outstanding and the fire station, I'd like to see that on a chart, and I'd like to see what the full impact is of all of these capital projects before I can say, you know, I'm comfortable with it.
All right. And I appreciate all of the questions, Jack. I'm going to, I'm treating some of them as kind of rhetorical and more as a comment. I do, there are a couple of questions in there that if folks want to answer them, then I would like to see them answered. One, I would like to see from Dr. Alardi, what would be the Plan B if, in fact, we don't do the borrowing here, which means we don't move forward? Second, I would like to see an answer to the question, and maybe this is from Mr. Lindmark, on the length of the bonding that we're contemplating just for this. We're not talking about the overall project, because we're not there. That's a separate Town Meeting vote. This is just on the $4 million for the design work.
That's already up there. It's $171. That's it. That, that's not the issue.
That we're not here to debate. You're going to have another shot of that. This is.
We'll be voting that.
No, listen, hold on. This isn't conversational. We're not talking back and forth over each other. I would like to have those, the questions, the one question now we're down to, on what is Plan B. We are not discussing what the fiscal impact of the overall project is. We won't know it fully until they come back. This is just a projection. So Plan B, Dr. Alardi, if you could help us out with that.
So I, I just do want to mention that in the packet, in the handouts that you received tonight, we have the tax assessment estimate for the first phase of the project, but on page two, it does show the estimated impact for the full scope of the project, just so that you have it. They are estimates, because both of these things have to be bid. They could come in. We expect, actually, the design phase may come in below what we have estimated. So these are just estimates, but the full project estimate is in here. As far as Plan B, so our class sizes across the district have been growing every year. We've gone from having class sizes of about 18 in our lower grades, which is critical to have smaller class sizes in the early childhood years when students are learning to read, the research backs that up consistently. They have gone up over the past several years. We're now at an average of 21 or 22, which is the maximum class size at the lower grades per school committee policy, and we are up to about 23 at the upper grades. Those are high class sizes for the region. When we do, if you want to go on our website, we have a district benchmark baseline report, which shows you the average elementary class size in all of our surrounding communities. We are no longer at the lower end. We are also no longer low class size compared to the charter school. So we lose people who opt to go to the charter school for lower class sizes, and that did come back in the data. We reached out to families who chose other educational options. Class size was a driving cost. So the school committee could vote to overrule their policy and exceed class sizes up to 24, 25. I expect that that would be challenged by the, the teachers' union, and it would also probably impact, it would definitely impact the quality of education program, as well as the competitive of Norfolk in, within the educational market. So increasing class sizes would allow us to absorb some, and then we would have to go to temporary solutions. Modular solutions, as you see, are not significantly less. If you were going to go with a permanent modular, they're over $30 million, with a life expectancy of 15 to 20 years on average. You would, and, and you could not do that without a planning process and site preparation. That's not a quick solution. You would be looking at construction trailer modules, moving offices out of the building, probably your special classes where students aren't housed all day, probably staged in parking lots. There isn't, we have access every space. If you go to the project website, you'll see at HL of Day, we currently have our music teacher and our technology teacher housed on the stage amid a variety of different equipment. We have, we converted our server room, so we built a box around the server, and the rest of that room is an instruction rest of that room is an instructional math space. Our library offices are now under temporary partitions. There is nowhere else to go. I really appreciate the question about the impact, and as I said when I presented earlier, I think every effort has been made to reduce the cost of this project. As far as construction costs, they have escalated, the escalation in construction costs and construction materials has far outpaced the overall increase in cost of living and inflation costs. PMC is a professional estimating company that everyone uses across the state for school-based projects. That's their area of expertise. They estimated this project in 2019, 2019 when we first were considering bringing it forward. The same company did the estimate now. The square footage has not changed. It's the increase in cost of steel, other equipment. AI3's here, they could probably talk about other things that are driving that cost. I'd, I'd refer people to the Mass School Building Authority website. They have tracked project costs for every project in the state that they have funded. You will see from 2019 to now that on average, school construction costs have gone up almost double based on that rate. And that's the concern of delay. The concern of delaying this further is that it will drive the overall cost up plus cause the town to have to fund a temporary solution. Hopefully.
Thank you. Over here, and then we're going to come back over here to Ms. Terrio.
Sushar, 172 North Street. My question is, in 2012, Freeman Kennedy was built or opened. At that time, I have information that said there was 175 children in the school, and your information tonight says there are now 552, down five kids, roughly the same amount. That was 12 years ago. When we did projects like the firehouse, the police station, the town hall, the library, everything was built large, thinking that in time, our population would grow, our need would grow. Was any thought given to the growth we would see in 2012 or prior to that when they built this building? I see that you want seven classrooms for pre-K. My understanding is pre-K is not mandatory, but is given to children under Title I, IEPs, et cetera. Are there really that many pre-K children that would fill seven classrooms and a need for a nurse and an administration at the pre-K level, which is indicated on your paperwork? That doesn't seem, it seems like the administration of whichever building, whether it be H L of Day or Freeman Centennial, could absorb as far as a nurse goes and administration goes without having a separate group of people. So I guess those are my questions that I need answered. It doesn't seem, according to your numbers, that much has changed at Freeman Kennedy in 12 years as far as enrollment goes. You're saying there's a lot of pre-K, but, and you want seven classrooms, but there's no data given. And so if you could please answer that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lardy, if you could answer those, there's kind of three groups of questions there. The planning from dating back there for growth a little bit on the pre-K question.
Yes.
And then some of that administrative space.
Sure. So all great questions. First of all, in 2012, I, I wasn't here yet. You had already done the Freeman Kennedy project, but I can speak to that. The town built the Freeman Kennedy with MSBA funding. MSBA funded half the cost of the construction of the Freeman Kennedy, but as a state agency, they do not allow you to build for future growth, only for your current population. The town could have opted to build a larger site and not participate in cost share funding for those additional spaces, fully fund them, but you would have had 10 years that you were paying operational costs in spaces that weren't occupied. So the town did not pursue that at the time, and they built it with, within the parameters that MSBA allowed, which is only for current capacity. We could certainly debate the state's, you know, wisdom in that, but that was the regulations. As far as preschool, and let me clarify because this may not have been presented clearly, but we currently have six preschool classrooms at H O D. Those six classrooms that are currently occupied by our students will be moving to the Freeman Kennedy. We're only gaining one additional preschool. And with the estimate of 200 children, grow, the estimated growth, we expect we'll need a seventh classroom to meet the needs of those required mandated students that we serve in the preschool. We're moving preschool to allow us to absorb the anticipated growth of regular K1, 2 students in H L of Day. So we're not expanding the H L of Day. The way we're creating capacity there is by moving some classrooms out to the new addition. So we will be picking up one additional preschool. We are also moving our current special education administration offices out of the H L of Day to create space and into the addition. That allows them to have administrative staffing there who can manage the entrance and security. It's not an add of people. So we're relocating the special education offices and the current preschool to the addition to create space for growth at, at H L of Day. And the upstairs of the Freeman will have additional classrooms to meet the growth and, that we anticipate in Freeman. The reason you see the greatest growth at H L of Day, it's gone up by over 100 children in the last 10 years, Freeman's growth is coming. So the demographic studies that we have done, and the most recent one, shows that the, the way the growth is happening in Norfolk is that families are coming here because they're choosing to have their kids, children educated in this community. So the growth is starting at kindergarten. We have a class in first grade this year for the first time. When I started, we had five first grades. We have nine this year. So it's hitting H L of Day first, and as those larger classes roll up to Freeman, that's where we're seeing the growth. So it's just started to trend up. You see Freeman's up by about 45 students now. It will continue to grow as our current kindergarten, first and second grade roll up. The other thing the demographic study found is that once students and families start with us, they stay with us. We lose almost no one to private placements or out of district programs. So those larger classes that are currently housed at H L of Day, we anticipate that those classes will grow and will roll up as they are currently structured. So to summarize, one additional preschool classroom in this plan from what we have existing, open spaces at H L of Day, no new administrators. The new space will access the nursing staff from the Freeman Kennedy, and the administration that's currently housed at H L of Day will be moved so that they can manage the entrance and security. So we're trying to also manage costs by maximizing the staff that we currently have. You're very welcome.
Ms. Terrio?
An awful lot of information. Presentation once again, as I explained on October 2nd, when you came to present to us, very informative, very well thought out. Unfortunately, I asked a couple of questions, which were not in that presentation, but you have since explained to this body what those were. My questions were, were we at capacity? How we were going to manage that during the forward movement of the sequence of events which you're looking forward to proceed? While we're not supposed to talk about the next part of it, the actual building of the addition, we talked about what Plan B was. I believe all of you, your response was that it was, we're at capacity. We're going to be at capacity during construction, and the Plan B was to put modulars in there. And I said, where in all of this presentation will I see the costs for that? And I believe you indicated that they weren't in there. So in my mind, I'm looking at 4.3, 3.9, and then however much it is for the modulars. And if I may step back, Joyce Terrio, 57 Rockwood Road, member again of the advisory board, which I love. To take a step back, I was five time zones away when the advisory board voted on this article. Had I been there, I would have not supported this. So attending members voted unanimously. I unfortunately wasn't there. We've already had a number of folks who have brought up the very same things that I was planning on speaking about. The tax impact to you. Mr. Oliveri is absolutely correct. We've not seen the fire station. We also have additional debt that is not going to come off the, the tax rolls, and our finance director can speak to that. I have taken a look at my own very modest home in this town, and in looking out another two to three years, how much this is going to cost. In addition to that, one of the things that we need to keep in mind as we consider voting for or against is the fact that we're at capacity. Based on the projections, we're going to be overcapacity. And even in this presentation, the addition and expansion at Freeman Kennedy is not going to help us. We will be looking at either more modular, modulars, or we'll be looking at another I just ask that you consider that as your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Come on up.
Laurie Scholl, 23 Marshall Street. In 2012, when this school was built, my question's about the septic system. I don't know if anything's been done. We had, when we had done the build out and master plan in 2010, we recommended wastewater treatments similar to the Borelli wastewater treatment, I think it's Borelli, up on the hill over here behind town hall. It wasn't done. So with this build out adding more, what are they doing with the septic system? And are we going to end up turning around to dig up a field and be able to support this addition? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lardy, if, if there's been any discussion at this early stage of that?
Yeah, we can speak to both. Justin Tebow from AI3, we did a full feasibility study, which looked at all of those systems, so he could speak to that briefly.
Very briefly, facts, just the facts.
Just the facts, absolutely. Justin Tebow with AI3 Ecotex, we looked at that specific question during the feasibility study. The existing septic field would have to be modified. It would add five rows to the existing septic to accommodate the additional flow based upon the, the, the student enrollment. So that study has been completed, and it would be five additional rows to support the students.
I appreciate that. That's it. Okay, thank you.
And can I speak to the temporary or no? I just wanted to speak to the fact that the, the reason we're recommending to move this forward now is to avoid needing the temporary trailers, and that's why they're not in this cost. And we expect if it moves forward today, that as I think the building committee mentioned, we may have to change some spaces at Freeman to bridge that three years, like removing the music room, art on a cart, some of those temporary things to avoid that, that projected additional cost. And we do feel this will manage the growth for the next 10 to 15 years.
Thank you. Sir?
Lake Logan, 23 Cleveland Street. I'm one of the bumps in that line going up, so problem's me. I have a unique position. I just moved here two and a half years ago-ish. I'm also in construction, HVAC, and I'm also in estimating. So I can kind of see where everyone's a little worried. But we have two, propose for two sites, two different spots. That is two different mobilization costs. So if you were going to go with that, you're kind of paying twice there. So my suggestion would be to go with this brick and mortar. HVAC is very expensive. I also went to Keaton High. We had three buildings in our high school. They have since rectified that. That was not fun. It was, you had to get from one building to the other, you were running. I don't do much running now. I did all my running in high school, so. Prices are only going to go up. Like I said, I'm in estimating. I've seen it happen myself. Those are accurate. And let's get this done now. Let's buy once, cry once. There's a couple of, you know, I, I know there's a lot of other building going on here, but I can tell you, no one looks at a nice school and has property value go down. So I think that's probably about it. Everyone else kind of stole my thunder here. That's about it, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Leehan?
I wanted to answer Mr. Oliveri's question in terms of the tax bills. The police station has been in the tax bills for several years now, so that's nothing new. We have two approved projects. The town has approved Tri-County and the fire station. Neither of those have hit the tax bills yet. The fire station will hit in January. It'll be approximately $450 for the average household per year. Tri-County would be about $150 on average per year.
Thank you, Mr. Leehan. Sir?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Eric Darling, 130 Warren Drive. So I, I spoke at this meeting last fall when we did the advancement to the planning phase, or the second study. And my concern there was that why are we delaying? We have educators that have been seeing these schools fill up with people, with fill up with kids, classrooms disappearing. We knew this was happening. We've known this is happening since 2017. This is not a problem that's new, but we've delayed. Sometimes we've delayed for good reasons. Sometimes we've delayed because we thought we would be able to get additional funding to help do this building. We did that three years in a row. It's not going to happen, given the fluency of this name, of this town, which is unfortunate. But this, these schools need expansion. We have kids, we have more kids coming in. This problem isn't going to go away. If we delay, costs go up. You know, if we had have done this 2017, 2019, we wouldn't, we'd still be having the same arguments, but we'd be having these arguments about something that's $15 million less. If we wait another year, it could be another $2 million. If we wait another four years, it could be $8 million. We're going to have to pay for this. If you want to be fiscally responsive here, responsible here, we need to do this now. We can't just keep kicking this can down the road. This isn't going to go away. We need to be expanded. We need to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. So seeing no one else rising to speak, this involves borrowing, so it is a two-thirds vote. Let's see if we can do it on the voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Okay, let's do, show of hands. Here, one hand up. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Want to see it one more time here. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. So I think this is close enough that I'd like to count it. Mr. Makinowski, Mr. Byron, Mr. Terrio, can you just come up here so we can divide this up? Okay.
Please repeat the question.
If you are in favor of borrowing the $4 million for the school design study, then, or the school design, you're standing right now.
Just, yeah, so the guy that was standing in the middle, I pushed him up to the side.
You took it?
I did.
Okay, so I did guess.
Okay, you can sit down.
Okay, you can sit down. All those opposed, please stand.
It's going to pass.
Thank you, you can sit down. 99 in favor and 45 opposed. It is a vote. The borrowing is passed. Thank you for the debate and the discussion.
Mr. Moderator, I move to reconsider.
So I don't accept a motion to reconsider unless there's new facts. I understand.
Okay.
So the motion to reconsider blocks it in, but I don't accept it unless there's a reason to actually discuss something. So I'm not going to accept it.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Lutz, just give this a moment. It seems that we have some votes. Guys are all missing out.
Road acceptance is all sorts of fun stuff.
Okay, Mr. Lutz, Article 7 is regarding acquisition of plans on Mill Street.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate from the Public Works Water Division Enterprise Fund the sum of $150,000 to acquire a parcel of land off Mill River Road, including all expenses incidental and related thereto. And further, to authorize a select board to acquire by purchase or eminent domain a fee simple interest in said land containing approximately 264,133 square feet, more or less, and shown on Town of Norfolk Assessor's map as parcel 3-6-55, and described in a deed recorded November 7, 2001 with the Norfolk County Register of Deeds in Book 15733, Page 102, for general municipal and water division purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz.
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. Article 7 would authorize the select board to purchase the parcel of land off of Mill River Road. The land is approximately six acres, a six acres and abuts two parcels that are currently owned by the town for water supply purposes, as well as water supply land owned by the, it also abuts land that's all owned by the town of Franklin. The land has been appraised at $135,000 and be acquired using funds from the Water Enterprise Fund, which is paid by ratepayers, not out of the tax rolls. The DPW believes that this is an appropriate use of funds as the parcel would, could provide support for drinking water well in the future. The advisory committee concurs with that assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. I didn't hear, was there a second? Thank you, Mr. T. Any further questions, comments? Mr. Rosenberg.
On this map, does it show where this plot is? I assume it's not the perfect circle.
It doesn't front. I believe the map does show lot lines, but it's off of Mill Road, so kind of near the Franklin Town Line. It's shown up.
Is there a pointer that can be used?
It's the property shown right up the street.
Right in the middle, vacant property. I see, okay, vacant property. Thank you.
Jason Pollander, 27 King Street. I was just curious if there's been any water testing on the property before you buy it?
Question for DPW, Barry.
Barry LaRiviere, Assistant DPW Director. The area in red, circled in red in 2015, was tested for well production. So that'd be the primary area. There was some testing, preliminary testing done in the vacant property area, but nothing conclusive. Nothing's found there. It would just enhance the buffer that we would have around our well field.
One more question.
Sure.
What was the property used for prior?
As before my time. It's pretty much been open for us, as far as I can tell. To the north of the property, there's Army Corps of Engineer, open space. So the whole thing, the whole area is primed for a well source for us.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Diamond, 84 Seccong Street. I'm in favor of acquiring this property. I'm just looking for clarification on the parcel. Mr. Lutz said 3-6-55, and the warrant it says 33-6-55. Thank you.
The warrant is accurate. My write-up is inaccurate. The warrant is accurate. It's the number in the warrant.
The warrant's wrong?
No, the warrant's correct.
Warrant's right.
My write-up is wrong.
Mr. Lutz was wrong, the warrant's right.
He enjoyed saying that, yes.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, the motion, the motion that was made is correct. The motion's right.
So the motion is correct.
Right. Yeah, the assessing department, yeah, the assessor department corrected that, that plot line, and what was read out is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was just looking for clarification because I couldn't find a map, 33.
Well, there you have it.
So, thank you.
And thank you for the question. All right. Seeing no further questions on this. This is an acquisition of land. It also requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor of the acquisition, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing no one opposed, it passes unanimously. Moving on. Article 8 is committee reports. There is no motion under committee reports. I'm aware of one.
Oh, okay.
Committee report. You may proceed. Thank you.
Andy Backenowski, Nagasaki Avenue. Here's a quick summary of the Energy Committee, and I will keep it to five minutes. How's that sound? Good?
Perfect.
Without going into too much detail, and I'll let you read as I'm talking. We started this in 2019. We established the energy baseline for the town. We received the award grant of $144,000. Subsequent, in '22, another grant for $136,000. We received several rebates from the utilities for lighting at the Freeman. Yes, and that was when the school was only six years old. So we're, we're looking at upgrading things like that. We did work at the DPW, looked at refrigeration technology at the Freeman, as things have changed quite a bit since the building was built. The weatherization project that was done at the H.L. of Day, I'll be honest with you, we looked at an annual save, energy savings of paltry $13,000. But realistically, what that did is that basically created a better comfort level in the building. So ultimately, you have, let's just say it's a psychological benefit. Even though it wasn't very noticeable, it's, it makes a difference if you've walked the old, or the first section to the second section. That breezeway was pretty drafty, and that was pretty much eliminated. So we are looking at about $100,000 in annual savings in energy costs. The, next slide, please. For the coming year, we just submitted about two weeks ago the application to the Green Communities Division for two projects. One is to repair the replace, the replace the inverter and the solar panels up on the roof of the Freeman. And you're saying, okay, well, the building's only in 2013. Well, the building is, you know, if it's going to be expanded, we're going to need a little more power. Our plan is to replace all the panels on the roof with a higher output. The current panels, even though you can't see it, part of my real work, I do, and a real job is I do inspections of solar fields. And these panels are basically all clouded up. The company is no longer in business, and that's what you get for taking low bids sometimes. But it is what it is. So the, we asked for $100,000, the maximum, from the Green Communities for the Freeman work. We would need to get a $30,000 commitment from the town. But since we've seen that in savings over the past three years, you know, we're hoping that there could be a, an understanding that this $30,000 is from the savings that, that we saw from the previous projects. And then the other work would be at the DPW, looking at replacing the fuel oil-fired boilers down there with air-source heat pumps, heat pumps, as well as what's called a hybrid system, which uses electricity and propane to run the system. And the expected rebate from the utilities, because this is all cutting new technology, would be about $26,000. So that project, the DPW, might be about $100,000. I have to admit, I don't have the exact savings from the DPW work, but I've tried to estimate as best I can, looking at, because literally we were doing this on the fly. We had a real big problem with getting quotes from people to support our request. But we're probably looking at about a three-year payback from that, from that project. Realize, everything up to this point, except for the $30,000, has basically not come tax dollar payments. It's come from your payments, from utility bills. If you look at your, you know, your energy bills at the bottom, you know, that 2-point-whatever percent, that's solar energy, that's energy efficiency. So we're getting our money back here. Next slide. So how are we doing? From 2019, the goal was to try and see a 20% reduction in our energy use. And we are actually at 6%. And they gave you five years to reach 20%. We have some, we have issues. COVID kind of got stuck in there. We had some, let's just say, deliverable issues. We had delays in the last round of funding. But this is not my first rodeo. I did, for 20 years, I did all the utility tracking for corrections. And if you can imagine how big those facilities are and all the different nuances with the energy usage. We have a problem in town. Our fuel oil is fine. Our gasoline and diesel is a problem. We are using more gasoline and oil, gasoline and diesel than Framingham uses. And Framingham is significantly larger than us. And I'm not the only one that noticed that. There's two people I've had discussions with at DOER, and they're, they don't know why. So using what I've learned from other work I've done, we have to implement an idling policy. I see a lot of town vehicles idling. Not all the time, but a few I've seen in the past couple of years. It's like, this, this is probably, and I'm saying this based on 20 years of looking at the data and seeing what the problems are. And hopefully, we can address that. So that's where we, that's where we need to concentrate on. So what, what would happen if we brought that down? If you take out all the diesel and gas usage we saw over the past two years, we'd be at 26% energy savings. So let's just say we get to that 13% if we got that under control. Well, we're closer than we are at 6% to 20%. So it's one of those things we have to really work out. Next one? Any idea what this building is? This is Senior Center. This is, this is, this drives me nuts when I see stuff like this. The left side of the building, that you can see the constant color that's on the left side, right to the left of the peak in the front, that was part of the water line repair and insulation work that was done. What happened is the building dynamics have changed, and because no insulation was touched on the right-hand side, it's leaking like a sieve. This, that's, that's wasted energy. Everything you see is wasted energy. I haven't figured it out. I can figure it out. It would take me a long time, but I don't, I didn't have the time to pull it together. What's really interesting about this, and this is, this is the nerd in me, you'll see some weird parallel lines, especially coming off the front and the side. That's what's called thermal ghosting. What that is, is that's a steady stream of heat that's extending that far out from the building. It's, so that's all wasted energy. The yellow is the highest value. The other parts, further down, well, the cold air will stay down closer towards the eaves and the drip edges. But as you move towards the top of the roof, that's where the heat's escaping. And if you've been in the Senior Center, you know that it's drafty on that side of the building. So anyway, so this is something that we need to work on. We need to look at these buildings more comprehensively. The plan is, actually, this winter is contact MassSave, because MassSave will have vendors that will actually do insulation and building ceiling at low cost or no cost. So that's our plan for this one. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Kevin, did you have an update for us?
I do. I'll keep it brief. I know we're going pretty late here. Kevin Champagne, 2 Seneca Street, Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. Just a quick update. When I was here in the spring, I thought at this meeting I would be saying, ta-da, the building's done. We're not done, unfortunately. There was a delay in the electrical contractor's work that delayed demoing the existing building. So there was some, some time stretch in the schedule. Fortunately, that was accepted by the contractor, so that stretch in time is at no cost to the town. Right now, we have work going on, on the east side of the building, doing the site work and landscaping. That'll probably wind down sometime later this month. And then they'll pick up again the site work and the landscaping once we get into the spring. At that time, once we get all the landscaping and site work done, we plan on having a ribbon cutting. Rather than doing it now with the, with the new building up, we'd rather wait till the whole project is done. So we're going to look at kind of a spring timeframe. To get to what everybody's probably wondering about, we're still on track to return money to the town. Right now, worst-case scenario, our, the OPM is tracking costs. You know, if, for the site work that we're doing in the spring, if we hit ledge, literally every linear foot that we put some site work and utilities in, we're estimating that we would still return about $750,000 to the town. We're hoping that it's going to be closer to $1 million by the time we're done. So we feel pretty confident that we will have money coming back to the town. It's just a matter of how much. So that's the update. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Article 9 is a general bylaw amendment. Mr. T.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded. And moved and seconded, Mr. T.
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. This article would remove an outdated requirement regarding property valuation listings from the town bylaws. Nowadays, property valuations are posted on the town website annually, which renders the prior requirement obsolete. The advisory committee supported the recommendation by a vote of four in favor with one abstention.
Mr. T. Seeing no questions or comments, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It passes not unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Article 10 is a zoning amendment. Zoning amendments to the dimensional table. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Garrity.
We few, we happy few. All right. So this article clarifies the zoning bylaws by adding rules for accessory buildings that were adopted in prior town meetings. This article and the next two are purely technical amendments to the bylaw to bring them into full compliance with what we did in previous town meetings regarding accessory buildings. As adopted, as we, as we've already adopted, accessory buildings must be set back 50 feet from the front lot line and must be set back at least as far away as they are tall from the sideline. This just puts this in a table.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. I assume that the planning board recommends approval here. And I'm getting nods from the planning board, so that is the case. Any questions, comments on this administrative amendment to the zoning bylaws? It is zoning, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, no?
No.
It passes not unanimously, but by two-thirds. Article XI, similar zoning amendment, Mr. Garrity.
I move to approve Article XI as printed in the warrant.
Second. And move it seconded, Mr. Garrity.
So this article mirrors language that we adopted in Fall 2023, which allows for special permits for accessory buildings, which do not meet the dimensional requirements found in the bylaw. In 2023, town meeting approved language in one part of the bylaw, 31065, accessory buildings, this article places that language into the part of the bylaw that deals with all setback and coverage rules, which is 3105.
Thank you. Again, Planning Board recommends approval, thumbs up there. Seeing Mr. Weider.
Christopher Weider, 64 Cleveland Street. How does the housing bylaw, the housing zoning change at the state level in June affect this change in our bylaws? Because I noticed Article 10, 11, 12, 13, all talk to setbacks, and the ADU section of the housing that was approved in June allows additional dwelling units, either connected or not connected, by right. And I noticed our bylaws don't seem to address that, and these changes don't address that, so I was wondering how that, does these couple of articles handle that?
Generally, and then I'll hear from the Planning Board, that whatever, we don't have a bylaw on the books, or close to on the books by February 2nd, then we're going to be living with whatever we can remove from our existing dimensional requirements for accessory dwelling units or accessory buildings of that type, until we develop a bylaw that has specific dimensional requirements for accessory dwelling units, but that's out there in front of us in town meeting planning, I did speak with the town planner, they said they're working on that for spring article, but...
Chris Montfort, Vice Chair of Planning Board. Exactly as you said, Mr. Moderator, this is something that we're working on and plan to bring into our next town meeting.
Thank you. You are welcome. Okay, seeing no one else at the mic, again, a zoning bylaw amendment requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article XI, another related zoning amendment, Mr. Garrity.
I think we're 12.
Oh, sorry, 12.
I move to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
This is our final technical correction, we take the language out of 31065 that we just put into 3105. So you put it in somewhere, and then you take it out where it shouldn't be.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity, we get a thumbs up from the Planning Board. Questions, comments on this one? Seeing none, also requires a two-thirds vote for Article 12, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 13 is a different zoning amendment regarding some definitions, Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
Second. And move it seconded, Mr. Garrity.
This article introduces two new definitions into the bylaw of story and half-story. The current bylaw already mentions story repeatedly, and in Norfolk, you can have a residence that is two and a half stories tall and 35 feet. The bylaw, however, is silent to what a story or a half-story is. So, while story is in common enough use, we all know what that understands, means, the additional half-story can lead to speculation and debate. This article seeks to clarify this potential ambiguity by defining story and half-story, and a half-story is another floor, which has no more than one-half the square footage of the story below with sloped ceilings. So essentially, this allows a third floor in a home, so long as that third floor is no more than half the size of the second floor, and has some sort of vaulted ceiling. This article is written in reaction to a recent case where a proposed house had a larger third floor than was apparently preferable. This article makes no significant change in the bylaw, it merely clarifies the existing limit of two and a half stories, so that it may be equitably applied.
Mr. Garrity, got a thumbs up from the Planning Board on this one as well. Seeing no questions or comments on this, thank you, Mr. Garrity. It requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
It passes by a clear two-thirds. Article 14 is a road acceptance, Mr. Chief.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as a public way, the laying out by the Select Board of the private way known as Ariana Lane, as shown on a plan entitled "As-Built Acceptance Plan, Ariana Lane," dated March 27, 2024, prepared by United Consultants, Inc., upon such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the Select Board, and to accept a deed for the fee interest in the way, and the easements shown on said plan for drainage, sidewalk, utility, or other purposes.
Second. And move it seconded, Mr. Chief.
Yeah, so this article would allow the town to accept Ariana Lane as a public way. Ariana Lane has been completed with sidewalks and drainage, and the DPW has recommended that it is ready for acceptance. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Mr. Chief. This is a standard roadway acceptance article, seeing no questions or comments, requires a simple majority vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 15, another roadway acceptance, Mr. Chief.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as a public way, the laying out by the Select Board of the private way known as Toils End Road, as shown on a plan entitled "Interim As-Built Plan for a Portion of Toils End Road," dated August 1, 2011, prepared by United Consultants, Inc., upon such terms and conditions as are acceptable to the Select Board, and to accept a deed for the fee interest in the way, and the easement shown on said plan for drainage, sidewalk, utility, or other purposes.
Second. And move it seconded, Mr. Chief.
Whoops. This article would allow the town to accept Toils End Road as a public way. Toils End has been in use for a long time, and it would benefit the town to get the paved portion accepted by the town for the purposes of Chapter 90 state funding. The Mass Department of Transportation allot these funds among towns based on a formula that includes the amount of road miles the towns have. More actual road miles will entitle Norfolk to a larger percentage of the funds. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Any other questions, creeping or comments, please, you can tweet down the item.
Tim Holmes, Myrtle Street. Previously, Ariana Road was just accepted with sidewalks and drainage. I understand Toils End does not have sidewalks and drainage, and it was previously built as a dirt road that was just paved over, and you're looking to accept just the paved half? Could we accept all of it for the Toils End, including the dirt path of Toils End? Thank you.
I think we can only accept what was laid out by the Select Board, so only the portion that was laid out by the Select Board is what is before the body, if anyone can describe exactly, because I know that Toils End goes from one end, and there's a discontinuance, and then it picks up elsewhere. Blair, if you could describe the exact portion that was laid out by this?
Blair Crane, Director of Public Works. So, the acceptance is just for the paved portion, down to the end of the cul-de-sac and back at this time. I know originally it did appear that there, that Toils End went on through, but...
Does it have, as a owner of the next section of that, is why I'm asking, is, does Toils End have sidewalks and drainage, as it should?
It has drainage, no sidewalks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Requires a simple majority vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
It passes by a majority. I believe that includes the articles before us this evening. I could have a... It's an motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
And move it seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Thanks very much for a very lively and robust town meeting. We'll begin this break.